Anyway, okay, we'll use a microphone. So this was a partnership between scientists in the research branch of the Forest Service and resource managers in the Forest Service and Park Service in the northern region of the Forest Service and also the Greater Yellowstone Ecosystem. So this is the map, this is a regional assessment, the largest of its kind, certainly in the Forest Service. So it covered over 74 million hectares, again included 16 national forests, three national parks, included the Greater Yellowstone area. And it was a vulnerability assessment and adaptation effort that was resource-specific. So we conducted science-based vulnerability assessments, the teams of scientists did, for each of these resource areas. And then we used those vulnerability assessments as a basis for development of adaptation strategies and tactics in a series of workshops in the different subregions that are in this map here. So today, we have four speakers who are going to cover water, forest, and non-forest vegetation, and also recreation. And then we're going to have a panel discussion. So I'm going to hold questions after the talks until the panel discussion. And we'll have a good 25, 30 minutes to have a good discussion then. So our first speaker is Mary Manning. She is the vegetation ecologist for Region One of the Forest Service. And she's going to be covering the forest vegetation assessment and also the applications and management. Thanks, Mary.
Okay. So I'm, oh, can you get up here? So Matt and I have to use our inside voices since we have the mic on. So anyway, we both are very loud, but we will leave the mic on for you. So I am basically doing the job of two other people who are the primary authors. So Lin Huang is the Climate Change Coordinator for the Northern Region of the Forest Service. And then Bob Keen is a Foresters Research Fire Ecologist at the Fire Lab in Missoula. And while I was a co-author on the forested vegetation chapter, it was really Matt and I who worked the most together on the non-forested. So he'll be presenting that. And so what I'm going to do is present sort of the process by which we incorporate these products into our land management decisions. Because we are a land management agency and we need these tools to help us do the best work in the right place at the right time, you know, why here, why now type of thing. So I'm going to try and buzz through this. I will warn you that as much as I've looked at this, people are really into animated slides and I'm not. So there will be times when little things will be flying into view and my plan is to just try and put them all on the screen and then talk about them. So again, it's the product applications, but I'm going to infuse some of the forested vegetation information into this. So you already saw this and I want to be clear that this is a really diverse landscape, as you can tell. And in particular, let's see if this works. Is this just supposed to?
It's the middle button. It won't show on the screen.
Oh, I see. Okay. The grasslands are really different than, say, North Idaho, for example. And so to address this, we basically had five workshops. I participated in all five, two summers ago. And so this product is a result of research folks like Matt and Bob, you know, basically gathering information from the literature. And then we had these workshops in which we broke out and had a sort of a structured list of questions to get at some of the things regarding vulnerability and adaptation and then tactics. So those are the things I will be talking about. So basically, you have, you know, the vulnerability assessment, which I'll be talking about, and the adaptation strategy and tactics. This is where the rubber hits the road for us, you know. So this top one helps inform what we do on the ground. And then this is another one of these moving things. How can we apply those products to what we're doing? Within the northern region, we have several forests that are revising their forest plan. And so when you revise a forest plan, and these plans are old, they are really old, it's time to revise them, you have to incorporate new science. And so during the first set of forest plan development, climate change was probably never addressed. So this is new information that needs to be incorporated. So how can we incorporate these things? Now, I'm going to switch gears and tie in the forested veg, just so that you guys have a little idea of how we're going to, what we did in that process for forested veg. And then I'm going to give a little example, that's kind of a forest wildlife example. And then I've got one that's sort of a snowpack Charlie example-ish. And then we'll kind of wrap up. I'm going to move quickly because I'm the first speaker, but we're going to have lots of time for questions. Okay. So when we gathered folks together, we did a little bit of legwork ahead of time and, you know, looked at the literature, got a sense for what are the big-ticket items in terms of stressors to vegetation in general? And in this specific example, forested vegetation, which includes mainly conifers, some deciduous trees such as green ash, cottonwood, aspen, paper birch, things like that. So obviously, most of you are really familiar with all of these. These are sort of the big stressors, I guess, or the effects. And we've all heard the story of the mountain pine beetle. We know that one, right? And so, you know, is that, if you think about pine beetle wildfire and drought, kind of the big three that are affecting a lot of our forest ecosystems. So these are the things that were identified. So a lot of this workshop effort was sort of validating what we had already thought in it. We got the local knowledge of what's going on. Again, stressors and current conditions, this is where none of these things surprise anybody, right? This is all what we already know. And so particularly in forested veg, which again, I'm more of a non-forested person, but these first four, you know, the fuel ladders and uncharacteristic wildfire, stuff that Charlie and I were talking about earlier. And so that one's no surprise either. So then the sensitivity, this is where I think it's fun. Because I think in order to understand how species individually are going to react to changes in their environment, and then collectively, as they're embedded within communities, that we see at one point in time, sort of these assemblages that are there now, whether or not they were there before, will continue to be there, is certainly interesting. But I think understanding how an individual species deals with, for example, less sun, so you're a shade intolerant species, you need, or yeah, shade intolerant, so you need the sun. So those sorts of things. And then also, what is your drought strategy? You know, how thick is your cuticle? What is your leaf shape? You know, those sorts of things. But then you embed them within a plant community and there's all this facilitation and things that happen that moderate the environment. So for the forested veg, and I think we did it for the non-forested, they looked at the individual species, let's just say dug fir, wide amplitude or lodgepole. But then they looked at them as they sort themselves out across the landscape and are associated with different plant communities. So sort of an upper subalpine, you know, upper montane, lower montane. So species with broad amplitudes will react differently at different edges of their range. And so we get into that a little bit too. And that's the stuff that I think is really cool. So even if we don't know necessarily where the climate's going to go, although we have some sense, it's still fun to sort of think about how they're going to resort themselves and what adaptation strategies they really have. So, okay. This is where it gets interesting. So I just gave like the dug fir example, and I suppose there's other species. But those that have relatively broad amplitudes, they may be dominant in a portion of their range and then more subordinate in other portions. And so understanding, you know, from seedling to death, do they need full sun? What do they need? You know, what sort of relationships are occurring in the undergrowth as they grow up and those sorts of things? The bottom line that was, that the forested group found, and again, I was mainly in the non-forested group with Matt, is that at the more midsick end, things are not so bad. Because if you think about it, if you've got lots of water and the temperatures are going up, hey, sounds good to me. You know, sort of a continental situation turning to more Mediterranean and maybe that's more conducive to growth. But at the dry end, not so good. And, you know, the example would be dug fir down in a solar-loaded, low-elevation ponderosa pine stand where it is sort of moisture-limited. How is that going to affect it versus one that's associated with grand fir and western white, kind of up in this country? You know, think about dug fir in two different places. So it's again, trying to understand response in relation to where it is in the landscape and the other associated species. So these sorts of things are what really drive, you know, how well a species can do. And I think the big thing for me is, you know, not only sort of it's genotypic, you know, how genetically, I want to say like, how do I say this? You know, is it really genetically predisposed to a lot of variation? And then the phenotypic plasticity, I think, is particularly interesting because I'm not a geneticist, but I will say that within an individual species, you know, I think about like aspen and cottonwood, they have a really high chromosome number and they have a lot of plastic traits, but it's also genetically predisposed. With tree species, I don't know. I'm not a tree person for conifers. But thing is, you're going to start seeding within even an individual species, winners and losers, or species that do well or don't do well. And again, it's sort of based upon these characteristics here. And so again, the group looked at this. And then, this is where it gets interesting. So I was going to put this table up and I think one of the other speakers will probably have it. But when we were working on this with the groups, we had a very structured approach. And so one of the things we were looking at to determine the vulnerability ranking was three different things, and I'm going to show them in just a second. But first, I want to just point out that these guys, just focus on, let's just focus on these three guys right here. So they're pretty high up, yes.
How did you get up to the scale?
I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you right now.
Because I'm a forester, I'm a forest ecologist, I'm a specialist in insect tree host relationships, and I see many, many conceptual mistakes in your.
Oh, and that's great, because I didn't work on this group. I'm just giving this talk for somebody else. So this is great. I'll put you in touch with who you need to talk to. But you have to remember, and Dave can comment on this too later, I'm just presenting for someone else. So it's very liberating, actually. But I'm going to tell you about the process, okay? So hang in there with me.
What?
Okay, but just hang in there.
Okay.
Yeah. So the low number means that it's at greater risk, okay? Just hang in there. Don't. Okay. So again, I wasn't in this group, that's very liberating. So we based it on, the collective we, we based it on three things, okay? So the likelihood of exposure. And so the idea is that, let's just take alpine larch, for example. Because I was reading the GTR draft today. And alpine larch is one of these species that's at the very, you know, obviously, it's not alpine larch, it's subalpine larch. But it's high up, it's with white bark pine. So it needs plenty of moisture, it usually occurs at the base of talus slopes in these cirques basins. And so the, again, and I would love for you to get in touch with the lead author, okay? But the idea, the supposition is that if moisture becomes limiting, that it's at greater risk, okay? Because that's sort of a life history need, it needs the moisture. Now, there is the likelihood of exposure. So again, high exposure because it's up high. And so it doesn't have anywhere else to go. Then we have, hang in there, likelihood of effects, okay? So what is the likelihood that it's going to happen? So let's go back to alpine larch, high, okay? They're saying chances are it's going to dry out, our snowpack is going to be reduced, we're not going to have as much available snow to that plant when it needs it. Okay. So let's look at the next one, magnitude of effects. And so to what degree is this going to happen? I know you're shaking your head, but like I said, I, you know what? I'll get you in touch with Bob. High, okay, so what I'm saying is, I have five minutes, this is great, because now I can keep moving through the other fun stuff. This is how, in these five workshops, the scientists broke out and worked with the folks who know their chunk of the world the best to come up with these rankings. Now, let us move on to how this is applied, quickly, by the way. So here's where things start moving. So we have the vulnerability assessment, the adaptation strategy, and then the tactics. What do we do? What do we do on the ground? So here we go, it's going to start, things are going to start showing up on the screen. So basically, each of these products help inform various stages of our land use planning and then our implementation of our land use plan. And in particular, when we get down here, right? So we say we want this, we want a fire-adapted ponderosa pine, great. How do we achieve it? So this gets into different things. But we don't have the tools, NRAP does not provide these tools in terms of the decisions. And I don't quite understand what Lin's getting at, but we can talk about this later. I think it goes into the next slide. Now, I'm just going to pop everything up, get ready, it's going to go fast and furious here. So here's the critical questions. So usually, when we revise a plan, it's like, well, we do it, do we do anything? Do we accept that this situation is dire for a species or a community? Or do we try and just hang on to what we have? Maintain and protect? Or do we say, you know what, this is too important, we're going to do something about it? So those are kind of, that's our framework for developing land use plans and then implementing them, okay? So here we go. Somehow, I missed one of my slides, but that's fine, because I'm running out of time. This is one that Charlie can relate to. This has to do with changes in snowpack. And if you're wondering what these acronyms are, West Slope Cutthroat and Bull Trout. So this is a really big deal. And I think, you know, this is where Charlie's talk's going to be great. Because water and fish go together. And if we don't have enough snowpack, then we have a problem. So in this case, what this will help us to do, and get ready, there's going to be more coming up, is use the climate adaptation strategy and tactics to inform whether or not we do anything, okay? So I think that rather than just make arbitrary and capricious land management decisions, NRAP helps us to have the tools we need to make the right decisions. And see, look, and I'm going to get done in under five minutes because I missed a slide, I must have hidden it somewhere. I may go back, so if, you tell me, I may go back. The tools are what we need. And I can tell you honestly, because I've worked on so much forest plan revision, I've been in the region 25, almost 26 years, and I have done a lot of forest plan revision. Originally, we had the Columbia River Basin. NRAP has taken that concept and made it even better and helped us to really step it down. And the other nice thing, whether you like what our rankings are or not, is that we involve those folks on the ground through these workshops and through review of the chapters. And so I think that process gives them some ownership. It's not something that we hand to them and say, well, here, we did this work for you, now you can use it. So it was really a partnership. And I think working with Dave and Jessica also really helped us because they had a good framework for us to work with that had worked well with the Blue Mountains, right? So we had folks guiding us through this process. Now, just hang on one second, tell me how much time I have.
About a minute.
Oh, look at this, this is what I missed. Let me go through this quickly. So we talked about trees, right? We may not all agree on how they were ranked, but here's a no-brainer. So we're in the lower montane forests, right? Flammulated owl and pygmy nuthatch. Let's have a chat for those guys. So, and Kevin walked in the room, perfect timing. You know, working in conjunction with our wildlife folks, we say, okay, not only is this sort of in an uncharacteristic condition in terms of uncharacteristic fire, we've had a lot of exclusion, grand fir and dug fir, which are shade tolerant, are coming up in the understory, and oh my God, it's going to take out the whole system. What this will do is, again, rather than just saying this, we have a framework within which to then, and let me see if there's another thing. Oh, that's what this was, okay. So I had shown you this slide, I know, can you, this is why I had to go back to my movement practices. This is such a no-brainer one. But what it does is, when we get to this point, this is usually when we get litigated, I mean, quite honestly. But if we have the ability to say, hey, in our NEPA analysis and in our description of existing condition and in our purpose and need, and purpose and need is nothing more than just, this is why we're doing it, okay? It's all part of the NEPA thing. One minute?
You're done.
I'm done. We have the ability to incorporate a science-based assessment to, again, be an anchor for us when we do get to this point. And believe me, when we get to this point, we get litigated, it's really important to have that science-based approach. So I was tasked with saying a lot of stuff really fast, but I hope I, and no questions, you guys are going to go on to other people, so. Okay. And you have to, don't clap with me, believe me. No, that's not. That's for the end.
Thank you, Mary. All right, we are going to hold questions until the end. So our next speaker is Charlie Luce, he's a research hydrologist with the Rocky Mountain Research Station out of Boise. He's going to be talking about the water resources portion of the assessment.
Yeah, that'll tempt me to walk around.
Yeah.
Sounds like I need to be here. So the two pieces that I'm going to discuss here are the past, what's going on, what are our trends that we're seeing so far, and then stepping from there to projections. And the general story here is the connection between climate and hydrology. And hydrology manifests the climate in a variety of ways, the snowpack, the glaciers, what comes out in terms of stream flow, and ultimately, soil, water, and trees. I'm not going to be touching that much on that, but there will be some implications from these other pieces directed towards that particular problem. The basic story of what climate change has been doing across the Pacific Northwest has been told many times already. Changes in the snowpack, so decreases in April 1st SUI, shifts in timing of stream flow related to the snowpack being shallower and melting earlier. And we're getting more story here that a lot of our past includes declines in precipitation as well. So it's this combination of warming and declines in precipitation have changed a lot of what's gone on in the Northwest over the last 60 years or so. One of the more exciting pieces that we get in this northern Rockies area is the changes that have been going on in the glaciers. And glaciers are sensitive to both temperature and precipitation, especially these mid-latitude glaciers. And this is from Dan Fugrey, showing changes in one of the glaciers in Glacier National Park. Over time, you see a very nice, robust-looking glacier here in the 1930s, moving on to just barely hanging on here in 2009. And this is a, the Shepherd Glacier, pretty big scene here and just barely hanging on by this stage. It has a little bit more of a southern aspect to it. And what the story is, as far as changes go on in this, is that there are years that are down, years that are up. And on the net, the down years have been more extreme than have the up years. So it's just the fact that these downs have been gradually getting bigger and bigger compared to what the ups look like. And this ties to the broader story of what we're seeing around the Pacific Northwest in terms of precipitation impacts and stream flow that shows up in. There's a number of ways to look at how systems shift. We can be looking at shifts in the mean, certainly something that gets described quite a bit. But there's also the shifts in the extremes, and this is a lot of what we're seeing. So we're seeing a reduced mean, but we're also seeing increased variance. So we're seeing the bottom drop out. The highs are as high as they ever were, they may or may not be more rare, they may be just as probable as ever. But these drier end events tend to be quite a bit more common and more severe where they do happen. So this is an example and a very common plot for stream flow across the Pacific Northwest. Sometimes the individual years that are down here change positions, but the overall story here is the 25th percentile, the one in four-year drought on these streams has been declining quite a bit. You see the numbers, 500 down to 250, so on the order of 40, 50% decreases in some of these streams. The mean's been going down about 20% across many of these. And then the wet years are staying about as wet as they ever have, and in some cases, going up a bit. Except across the very northern set of streams, we're also seeing decreases in the wettest years. And so you can see this as a shift in PDFs, for those who are familiar with the math on that, just sideways bell curve here. It may not actually be bell shaped, but you get the general sense, it's spreading out. And the spread's downward. When looking at extremes, one of the extremes that's of particular importance to many water managers, and we had a sewage treatment engineer this morning in one of the presentations, this is a big number relative to sewage treatment plants, this is what you're discharging to in the dilution ratios. But in any event, we're seeing some big declines in this 20 to 50%. It's a bit scattered over the region. This is actually one that's not seeing quite so much, the monsoonal moisture in that area is, has been increasing apparently, but the summer flows are actually doing fine down here in Donner and Blitzen Creek, but across quite a bit of the rest of the Northwest, not so statistically significant here in Montana in Region One, but scattered around. The tie-in here ultimately for low flows and something that's important is these groundwater-dependent ecosystems. And you've probably heard some people talk about this, particularly with respect to Western, or the Cascades of Oregon, the Eastern Cascades of Oregon. And actually, in the Yellowstone area, there's quite a chunk of this, the Madison River, thank you. So it's the one that headwaters in where Old Faithful and so on, so there's quite a bit of spring activity. But it has a 40-year residence time, it's an amazing stream. This is contrasting two other streams, but just to give some sense, this is Rock Creek in Montana, snow-dominated, not a lot of groundwater, so it runs along here, we get the snow melt signal and it's back down again within a month or two. If we look over here, this is the Matolius River, it has about a 20-year residence time for the water. And you can see that it never quite goes down. So this is a one-year plot. And we come in with quite a bit of water, we get a little bit of bump up here with the midwinter floods, comes back down to this base flow level. The picture for the Madison River and some of the rivers coming out of the Yellowstone area are actually even more extreme than this. They just get a little bit of a blip up and it's just almost a flat line across. And these streams are often called chalk creeks or spring creeks, very famous for fly fishing and such things, and are a valuable resource. When we look at impacts on those, this is the Middle Fork, the Rock Creek, the more variable one, you see a lot of up and down here from year to year. But rivers like the Matolius average that out, so you get a much cleaner, more statistically significant signal as to what's going on in terms of declining flows. And it's called low-pass filter. So it really filters out the noise and you get a very clean signal that precipitation's declining in streams like that. And similar story again on the Madison River. And one thing to look at in terms of low flow now on these, is it's hard to get them to bump down. And if you're, at least relative to this notion of we're getting earlier snow melt, and that earlier snow melt means that you have a longer time to dry out between when you start and when your low flows are. But imagine you've got a trough of water and you have, and it's got a bit of a leak in it, and you take a bucket to it once a day and you fill it up, as long as you bring that bucket in about the right time, you can kind of keep the water level in that trough within a certain range. But if you delay a little bit longer, that trough might go a bit longer. That's one of these mean residence times of 20 days. Now, if your trough is really big and has a really slow leak, it doesn't matter when you get there with a bucket of water, it's going to stay pretty flat. So the low flows are not going to be sensitive to when that bucket of water arrives. So these things that we call spring creeks are a pretty resilient resource relative to this low-flow change. So I've described a bit of the past and a bit of what we're looking at in terms of the changes that have gone on in different kinds of streams. I want to step into the future, so the past and the trends we've seen in that may relate to something we call intrinsic variability, i.e. the ups and downs that we see naturally. It's a nice, long set of words for that. But these are the natural variability in a sense. But trends do have a context, the time period and location, and it's really the shared trends when we look at what's going on with wildfire, when we look at what goes on with snowpack, and we tie what goes on with the temperature and with the precipitation to these outcomes that we care about, that we want to know. So past, when we look at it in that sense, gives us a sense of the sensitivity to what the climate drivers are. So we can use what the past trends have been to observe what the sensitivities are relative to what might happen in the future. So we take these projections of climate, the precipitation trends and the temperature trends, all related to the change in long-wave radiation, and work with those. So this is what IPCC, the International, okay, I'll just say IPCC. But this is the past trend, so we've got a little bit of an up in temperature here, starting from 1900 and then heading up. And pretty strong projections for this RCP 8.5. And what RCP 8.5 stands for is additional 8.5 watts per square meter of additional downwelling long-wave radiation, that's four or five Christmas tree lights on every square meter from the greenhouse gases. What's interesting is there's a pretty strong feedback of the atmospheric moisture with this, that multiplies that by about four. So most of these models are showing an additional on every square meter of the Earth's surface, 30-watt light bulb shining down on the Earth's surface. So that's the change in energy we're projecting out here with this RCP 8.5, when you're looking out into the mid-century and beyond. It's quite a bit of additional forcing. And so it's getting warmer. It's quite a bit of additional forcing, and so it's getting warmer. When we look at precipitation, it's a pretty confusing set of choices. One thing is the atmosphere holds more water vapor. If you take that little parcel of air and you lift it over a mountain or lift it convectively, it produces a lot more waterfalls out of it. And so that effect is going on, it's doing some of the lifting, but then there's some other dynamics that go on that, for example, the spreading of the Hadley cells, which are these dry desert bands that we see at mid-latitudes, those are expanding as well. So that gets mixed into this picture to some extent. But the net picture here is climate change models, GCMs, are not particularly good at predicting, projecting future precipitation. There's a lot of disagreement among the various models on that. So we're flying blind on that side, but we do know it's going to get hotter. Let me start then for projections with snow. And if we take a look at a fairly simple model on this, and this agrees also with the more complex ones, if we look over the Enrapp region, we're seeing declines on the order of 20, 30-ish, in some cases 40%. Contrast very strongly with expectations in the Cascade Mountains, which are lower elevation mountain range and tend to be warmer. They're right on the edge temperature-wise. If you take something that's a degree and you warm one degree below zero Celsius, just barely freezing, you raise it a couple of degrees, it's pretty edgy, as opposed to where it's very cold out here. It's not making quite as much of a difference. It makes some difference on those shoulder seasons, though, so we do pick that up. The snow residence time, which is the average lifespan of a snowflake, a bit, not quite even as strong on that. And especially up here around the Greater Yellowstone ecosystem, one of the better spots in the Western U.S. as far as change goes. It's one of the more resilient places. Another thing we can look at, looking at these uncertainties, the uncertainty in the snow projections, if we get the delta s across that precipitation uncertainty, so we don't know what precip may do, may go up, may go down, but we know what to expect from warming, so we can build a ratio on that and see whether that's a big question. And if we look around the Yellowstone area and up here into southwestern Montana and the Idaho-Bathleth area, we're really looking at systems where precip changes, depending on what that does, can really make a big difference in the story. So those are places where we kind of have to ride it out and see what actually does manifest in terms of changes. There will be, you know, for example, here, a lot of uncertainty in the Cascades about that dire outcome. Stepping into stream flows, we used a model called the Variable Infiltration Capacity Model, and these runs were actually done by the University of Washington, the SIG group there. And what we've done is compiled them into streams where we can do validation and some other work. This was a validation of the VIC model for these stations across the Columbia River Basin. The overall story is not too bad. In some places, particularly rain-dominated, as we got further east into some of the more snow-dominated, not quite as good, and in places with a lot of groundwater, downright poorer. But we were able to find, rather than just looking at matching the hydrograph, looking at particular metrics that we could derive using the VIC model that aggregated over seasons, and this was the set of them. And when you do some averaging, you can find some metrics that do well universally across that map. So even if the hydrograph is wrong, in detail, particularly related to timing, we can pick up a bit more. So the mean annual flow, mean summer, 7Q10 is this minimum weekly flow with a 10-year return interval, i.e. the low of the low, center of timing of stream flow, the bank full flood, and this winter 95 is particularly important to fall spawning fish, and that's the probability that the floods that do come, come in the winter instead of in the spring. We're using these two scenarios, two change in precipitation versus change in temperature, as bounds on what the projections might be, so some sense of the uncertainty that we have for these projections. So I'm going to show both the mean projection and then the difference between these limiting bounds here. This was the map of the watersheds that are in the Enrapp area, so if you recognize one of these names while this is up here for a minute and want to focus on that, just pay attention to the shape. That will show up again in the following slides. And sorry, we trimmed it off for eastern Montana, but a lot of eastern Montana looks pretty much like this little sliver of eastern Montana, so it's a good representation of the drier country. Mean annual flow is projected to go up just a little bit, so on the mean side here, the delta percent change here shows a lot of things with a high degree of certainty on that, but a lot of uncertainty in the mountains here. So this uncertainty range down here is as big as or bigger than the percent change projection. So these are not as reliable in terms of predicting what's going on here, but this gives a sense of the models really agree on what's going on out here. If we're looking at mean summer flow, very blue map over here. Pretty universal sense that because of the earliest snowmelt timing, less snowpack, the mean summer flows are going down, and definitely the story that we see going on out here as well, pretty sizable changes in some of the lower mountains out here. If we're looking at the 7Q10, again, a very similar story, and an even more certain outcome broadly out here. It says that this is pretty much the expectations across those models, a bit of a decline, and we're fairly certain of that. The center of timing of stream flow, mostly certain, but some real uncertainty in some of the higher edges of the peaks here, but it's pretty solid shifting of several weeks. These are days here, so 50, 60 days of change in some of these places. Again, good potential impact of what's going on for the trees in that area. The bank full flood magnitude, you can look at some changes over here, and they're changing in some places quite a bit as you change to rain-on-snow type floods in mid-elevations, but the uncertainty is quite substantial in those, in the places where the biggest changes are expected in floods. As you go further east, a bit more flooding expected, but a fair amount more certainty on it. If we're looking at this W95 metric, really important to bull trout and a few related species, big changes going on here, mid-elevations, northern Idaho, and unfortunately, those are also the places with most of the uncertainty on it, but broadly a fairly certain change in metric there. So the ultimate story here, snow will not last as long, April snowpack will mostly decline, could be better or much worse, depending on how the precipitation goes in high elevation places like Greater Yellowstone. Glaciers are at extreme risk. They're very sensitive to both precipitation and temperature changes, so it's going to be a rough go for some of those. Less water in the summer, lower flows, earlier center of timing. Annual flow's fairly uncertain. More frequent flood occurrence in winter versus spring, but the flood magnitudes are uncertain. And what do we do about it? Well, this has been my story, and I keep sticking to it. The smarter we are, the more we know about our ecosystems, the risks that are there, the roads that are there, the more capacity we have, A, to respond to "when surprises", I'll put that in quotes, come around climate change. Sorry, we know what climate change is doing, we should stop having surprises. Fires should no longer be a surprise. Insect outbreaks should no longer be a surprise. They're just part of life now. So let's start planning ahead for it, collect the information we need, so we can respond intelligently. Thanks much.
Okay, Charlie will be here for our panel if you have questions for him. Our next speaker is Matt Reeves. Matt is a research ecologist with the Rocky Mountain Research Station out of Missoula. He's going to be talking about non-forest vegetation and adaptation.
Okay, well, thanks, everyone, for joining me for this part of the Enrapp assessment. And today, we're going to focus on the rangeland or the non-forested portion. I should recognize my co-conspirators here, many of whom are either with the Forest Service or at the University of Wyoming, and were responsible for a lot of the sagebrush kind of envelope projections that we'll examine briefly in this talk. So I wanted to switch gears a little bit and not talk so much about specific details, but more from the perspective that if you're going to conduct something like this for your own unit or to talk about this as an awareness project, there are some things, some key points that we learned, I think, as a result of this exercise that are valuable at a conference like this. And the first is, estimating uncertainty is difficult, and you probably hear that in every, every single talk, but this is certainly no exception. There's a lot we don't know about what's happening or what's going to happen, and we're just beginning to understand a lot of our climate change experiments. With regards to the non-forested systems, when we talk about free air carbon dioxide enrichment studies where they superimpose CO2 enrichment on various vegetation assemblages, what happens? We're just now beginning to reap the benefits of those studies that, in many cases, were inceptioned 15, maybe 20 years ago. So we're just now trying to figure that out. Our understanding is going to change. What we know today is going to be different than what we know tomorrow, and it's going to probably change pretty quickly as not only what we see on the ground happens quicker, but also the types and amounts of research in this area. And maybe the most important point for rangelands is just that, that a lot of things are uncertain, but all is not lost. There are some things we can look to to help guide a project like this. And the first is, just taking a look here, we see the results of different models for sagebrush distribution in the future. Okay, it doesn't really matter the specifics, and you think, well, my goodness, they're all over the map, and that's true. There is a lot of uncertainty, but we can also see places where they tend to agree. So oftentimes, what we're looking for is not so much, wow, where does everything disagree? That's important. But perhaps more importantly for deciding what we're going to do and where, where do things possibly agree? And so in this case, at the tip of Yellowstone, it would seem there's a good bit of agreement in the red box there. And I think you can find this in just about any kind of modeling exercise. There's points of agreement, you just have to find them. Another thing, with regards to the northern region, we tend to have a more greening response, I think, in the future, according to most of our work, than what the rest of the country might look like. So for example, if you see the area down here in Texas, in this neck of the woods here, you can see things look, and this is a model ensemble, but things tend to look pretty brown in comparison to where the northern region is going to sit. The map in Panel B shows the uncertainty, in other words, the model agreement of production. And we see that the warmer tones indicate higher agreement than the cooler tones, which are disagreement. So what this says is, we think it's more productive, and most of the models suggest that in terms of net primary production. So as I said, there's areas we can find where there is agreement. The other thing we found is that it seems to me that in non-forested systems, the results of most modeling exercises suggest that high-elevation areas will probably experience more rapid change in terms of production due to things like greater growing season and things of this nature. Okay, so to conduct this work, the non-forested portion of the Enrapp process, Northern Region Adaptation Partnership, we wanted to have a common set of indicators, a common set of climate change effects, so that when we were at a workshop, when we were communicating, when we said "climate change," people knew what we meant, and we were specific about it. And so the variables or the phenomena we chose to standardize was, we were looking probably at warmer temperatures, especially minimum temperatures, and that's key to a lot of the production questions, the, you know, how much vegetative growth can we expect, decreasing snowpack, increase in severity and frequency of wildfire, but also episodic propagules. Some years are really good for seed, some years aren't. If you have progressive years of poor seed in an area that does not have a good seed bank, and then you have a wildfire, there can, locally at certain areas, can certainly be a problem. So our current condition in existing stressors that we wanted to evaluate in the backdrop of climate change would be invasive species, perhaps improper livestock use, fragmentation, how disjunctive are communities of certain vegetation types becoming, and sod-busting, this idea that over time, we're slowly but surely losing our non-forested base to things like agriculture, residential development, things of that nature, and then also uncharacteristic fire regimes. So we have some target climate change impacts we're concerned with in the backdrop of these present-day stressors. Now, there's three types or three scales of assessment in the Enrapp in general. There are the species or the guild types, so they focus just on individual species, a whitebark pine, for example. We tended to focus more on vegetation assemblages, vegetation types, but there's also the resource concern that you might find in there as well. But we focused on vegetation types. With respect to climate change, it's important, I think, to consider the concepts of resistance and resilience, and that being, all other things being equal, where can we expect things to bounce back from some of these system perturbations? Or where might they, once invaded, for example, might be able to continue their ecosystem function? And I think the best example of this, or one of the best contemporary examples, would be the sagebrush, cheetah grass sort of fire feedback cycle. So where are stands and why are stands of sagebrush, in this case, more resilient or resistant to invasion? So there's a lot of work around this issue, and I think it's important to consider, with respect to climate change, all other things being equal, it can boil down to three things. The first, north versus south aspects, because of moisture accumulation, will probably prove to be more resistant to things like cheetah grass invasion and other issues. Deeper soils would also exhibit that characteristic, and finally, increasing elevation. It's all about the moisture, and I think these sort of micro-conditions will certainly increase species and vegetation types' ability to withstand some of the climate change perturbation. So we broke up our system into four broad categories. Montane shrublands, montane grasslands, which are predominantly cool-season species, those that you might find between here and somewhere to, you know, west-central Montana, something of that nature. Think of a montane grassland with cool-season species. There are sagebrush shrublands, which we subdivide, and then the northern Great Plains, which exhibit a mixture of both warm and cool-season species with changing precipitation patterns, changing modalities and things like that. You can see how that would have significant implications for somewhere like the northern Great Plains, where there's mixtures of both cool and warm-season species. Let's talk a little bit about sagebrush. It's kind of a hot topic right now for a variety of reasons. When we talk about sagebrush, there are a lot of things to consider, because sagebrush is not just sagebrush. We've got mountain sage in the case of Aciana, low sages in the case of Noba and Arbroschula, three-tip sage in the case of Tripartita, Artemisia Cana, silver sage, a sprouter, Artemisia Tritantata, you know, basin big sage. And then finally, the most ubiquitous would be Wyomingensis. So when we evaluated the sagebrush and looked at climate change impacts, we subdivided based on those types of communities. So when we say we evaluated a type, what does that mean? Well, as was indicated early, we had a series of workshops, and through scientific guidance with literature, with modeling, with other things, we presented this information to managers and tried to work with them to determine what was most important. And here's an example of that for montane shrublands. Okay, and we developed a table or a matrix like this for each of those types. What I'm going to share with you today, instead of going through the individual results for each of those types, we're going to focus instead on some of the adaptation, some of the adaptation strategies that managers felt would be useful. So in the case of montane shrublands, encourage appropriate fire regimes. Very important for wildlife species in this neck of the woods. Reducing weed invasion and increase knowledge of the ecology of shrublands. These have been kind of glossed over to some degree. And I should also note, you're going to see repetition in terms of adaptation. Why? Because we don't have that many tools, but also the same tools should work across different types. Wyoming big sagebrush, as I said, the most ubiquitous of our sagebrush systems, and it's very important for things like sagegrass. You can look no further than the newspaper to determine that. And again, this is where most of our resistance and resilience work has been done so far, I think, has been focused somewhat on the Wyoming big sagebrush types. And you can see down here on this end, so they tend to occur in the warmer, drier locales. So a lot of our research is coming out in this type. What do we do about it? What are the adaptations? Encourage appropriate fire regimes, very slow recovery. You know, it's arguable, but that's the general consensus. And then this thing, ecologically-based invasive plant management, which is treatment or detection, which is prevention, find the weeds and then treat them, implement proper livestock grazing, and then work with geneticists. Why? After a wildfire, 20 years from now, where is our seed source going to come from to revegetate these areas? Got to think about these things now. And then strategic actions, use of ecological site descriptions or something like that to start with, to determine if a management activity is good or not. So our partners at the University of Wyoming have done a lot of work with modeling the distribution, the potential distribution of Wyoming big sage. Cool areas represent areas where the models kind of expect an increase in the ability to persist or perhaps increase its presence. And then on the bottom is germination, survival, take-home messages. We're just now starting a lot of this work for a lot of these non-forested We're just now starting a lot of this work for a lot of these non-forested types. Low sagebrush, again, prevention and monitoring. Why? They don't occur across a wide range of the area, they tend to occur in pretty poor soils, and generally do not seed bank very well. Three-tip sage, one of our sprouters, again, the early detection and treatment, but it probably is not as resilient to fire as previously thought. So that's something you keep in mind. A lot of the management plans have been predicated on that. Basin big sagebrush, detection, treatment, but encourage coordination, because this happens to be a very inter-agency species in the region, in the northern region, controlled a lot by, say, the BLM lands or even some state lands. So coordination is key. Early prescribed fire, perhaps, to reduce catastrophic fire, and then the possibility of targeted grazing. Sheep and goats for things like leafy spurge, that can be a good thing. And then again, work with geneticists, look for drought-tolerant seed sources as needed. Mountain big sagebrush, conifer encroachment is an issue. In the future, will climate change enhance that? Maybe. But to increase the resilience, to increase the resistance of these communities, consider removal of conifers. Appropriate livestock use, and again, targeted grazing for invasives. C3 grasslins, the cool season. Appropriate fire regimes, detection, treatment, appropriate livestock use, and conifer removal, and finally, managing recreation. Due to the wide, you know, the sort of easy access to some of these lands, I think in the future, as recreation increases, this is something we want to definitely look at. Northern great plains, a similar system. One of the things that the managers thought was very important was looking at climate change from the respect of pollinators. One way to ensure resilience in these communities is to consider the use of prescribed fire, perhaps, and again, the appropriate grazing regimes. So what does all this mean? And the answer is, I don't know. But I do know one thing, and that is, in terms of adaptation, the things we listed, detection, treatment, targeted grazing, you know, prescribed fire, removal of conifers, we already know how to do this stuff, and managers are doing it. So I'm not sure that more research is needed just for adaptation, certainly for impacts and monitoring, things like that. But we're already doing a lot of these things, and we just need to do them more strategically and cost-effectively, perhaps. And with that, I think our time's probably up. How close am I?
Fourteen and a half.
All right.
Wow.
Perfect.
So there you have it. I think this little baby goat here is just happy with what's happening with his sheep mommy.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Okay, so our final speaker today is Dave Peterson. Dave is a research biologist with the Pacific Northwest Research Station, and he's one of the leaders of the NRAP project. And this is his new specialty, recreation.
I've done it for long enough, I guess I should have some experience at it, but the guy who did the heavy lifting on this project was certainly Michael Hand, who's a research scientist with the Rocky Mountain Research Station. And we are greatly indebted to these folks who are also on the recreation team for the assessment, and it was truly a partnership of research scientists and managers who made this happen. So I'll try to, very briefly today, synthesize our work over the last couple of years, and I'll try to wrap things up a little bit in terms of other things that have been said so far this afternoon. So, you know, at first brush, you might think, why recreation? When you think about resource assessments, we usually think timber, water, wildlife, fisheries, those sorts of things. So why is recreation so darn important? And I'll try to convince you why it is. In this particular assessment region, the national forests and national parks annually have 13 million visitors. That's a lot of people. They spend $800 million a year on recreation. Guess what timber receipts are off the national forests in one year? It's about $30 million, an order of magnitude less than the recreation. Now, there's timber coming off of private lands, but it still doesn't approach this number, and I think this is becoming more common throughout the West, where, you know, resource extraction of various types is valued less, perhaps, than some of these more socially amenable ecosystem services. Most of the expenditures, or at least the largest expenditures, are on lodging and fuel. I don't know if the fuel includes beer or not. But basically, recreation provides this link between climate, ecosystem services, and then human values. So it really puts people in the picture, perhaps, more than some of these other resources. Now, this is the first time that recreation's been addressed in a climate change vulnerability assessment, period. And so we didn't have a conceptual model for how to do this, so Michael put this one together. We don't have to agonize over the details here. But basically, we have the climate-related issues here, we have things that can change here in the ecosystem, and we have things that can change here in terms of recreation and social values. So I'm just going to go through this very, very quickly. And there's two ways, there's two pathways here. One is the direct pathway, in which we have these changes in climate, and they directly affect how people behave in the environment, where they recreate, when they recreate, how much they spend, and so forth. The other way this can work is going through the ecosystem. So we have these changes in vegetation, like Mary was talking about, changes in water and so forth, those in turn affect recreational patterns and values. So there's two different ways this can happen. These are the sensitivities that were identified during the assessment as being most important, warm weather activities, hiking, mountain biking, so on. Wildlife-related activities is another way of saying fishing and hunting, and then snow-based activities and so forth. But these are kind of the big three, and that's what I'll spend most of my time talking about today. First of all, the climate effects. Temperature, precipitation, hydrology, temperature gets warmer, that affects people's behavior. Snowpack reducing, earlier spring melt has a huge impact on one way and how people go about recreation. Vegetation disturbances, we've already heard about this, you know, more wildfire, we might have some changes in vegetation, that might affect how people recreate. And then if there are effects on wildlife and fish, that will affect certainly hunting and fishing behaviors. We know it's going to be a tough time for some of our cold-water fish species in the future, but not everybody's all that concerned about catching cold-water fish, that maybe some of our introduced and exotic species are okay for people who want to catch fish. So that might be a wash, but there will be some effects, certainly. So let's go through these individually. First of all, let's look at the expected effects on warm weather activities. So this is hiking, wilderness, backpacking, camping, and so forth. The primary sensitivity to climate here is this increase in the amount of snow-free time. This is really critical in northern Rockies, where you have high mountains, lots of snow. We may also have a change in some of the unique features, people like to see wildflowers. I know in the Northwest, where I live, in western Washington, the timing of wildflowers was about six weeks early this year. So if you waited until August, which is the usual time, you didn't see any wildflowers, they were gone by then. So that kind of thing can change very quickly. The kinds of effects. First of all, if the weather gets warmer, we can expect an increase in warm weather activities. You can get out to hike earlier, you can get your mountain bike on a trail earlier, you can camp earlier, especially during the shoulder seasons. So earlier in the spring, early summer, later in the late summer to early fall. So if people can spend more time out there doing this stuff, you might shift where you're going to do it, you may not want to recreate where the fire burned, you may not want to recreate when there's a lot of smoke in the air. But in general, we expect that recreation will probably increase, unless it gets so hot that it becomes unpleasant to be out there. Snow-based activities. Now, this is the area where we expect probably the largest effects of all. If we start reducing snow, that's going to affect our ski areas and so forth, if we have a shorter ski season, or a snow machine season, for that matter. And so what we expect, there'd be a lot fewer opportunities. And this would refer to both, you know, highly-developed activities like downhill skiing, as well as cross-country skiing, snowshoeing and so forth. So a much more concentrated and shortened season at fewer sites. Now, you see in this bottom bullet here, this idea about substitution, people can move around, they don't have to go to the same ski area, they can go to different states, different ski areas, you know, and change their activities. So that's a possibility in the future. And then finally, wildlife-related activities. It's pretty unclear what's going to happen to most of our wildlife species, but if it gets really hot, most hunters don't seem to like a really warm autumn season for hunting. This year in the Northwest, we had lots of river closures because it was too warm, streams were low, streams were warm, and then we're going to have this reduced cold-water fish species, if you like those, but we might have the increased warm-water species, that could be a wash. So perhaps a bit of a misalignment of what are our regulatory hunting seasons with the availability and patterns and migration of ungulate species, for example. And uncertain effects on how that might affect the harvest of those animals. We're almost certainly going to have decreased opportunities for things like bull trout and cutthroat trout, but then if you like bass and northern pike and, you know, brook trout and those sorts of things, they taste pretty good, too. So maybe it won't be a big deal there. So that's why there's both a plus and a minus down here. Okay, what does this look like on the ground? And Matt did a nice job of introducing some specific adaptation options here. So I'm just going to go over summer and winter recreation very briefly. So we're pretty darn sure it's going to get warmer and we'll have less snow melt. And in general, one thing we can do in the agencies is to try to respond to that by continuing to provide recreational opportunities in response to some changing demands. Now, what does that look like on the ground? First of all, we have to understand what those new patterns are going to be, where are people going to go that's different? We may have to adjust the capacity of some of our recreation sites, either more or less for our campgrounds, picnic grounds, and so forth. And we're going to maybe have to think about when we open up facilities. One thing that happened this year in a lot of areas in the West is, people were out there trying to get in in February and March, gates were closed. Now, my experience, people are very creative about breaking down gates and burning down gates and so forth, but we don't want that. So we might need to think about changing the seasonality of our recreational facilities. Easier said than done. Winter recreation, I've always already mentioned this idea about temperature, decreasing snow, obviously that affects things like skiing, that's kind of a no-brainer. So this is not something we can resist, as Matt said. So we're probably going to do a much better job if we transition to different ways of doing business, either get used to a shorter season or accommodate changing use patterns. So one thing that a lot of ski areas in the West are already doing are expanding to multi-season operation. Sometimes they just, I mean, if you're a, if you make snow-making equipment, that's a good business to be in right now, because the ski areas are buying up these suckers like crazy. Now, there's some real environmental trade-offs and energy trade-offs in doing this, but it's a way of adapting, it's a way of coping, at least in the short term. Lots of other things you can do in the snow, other than skiing downhill, and then this idea that maybe some of our snow conditions are not going to be as safe as they used to be, so let's keep people out of danger and do some education. 2015, the year without snow, at least in the Pacific Northwest, not so much in the Rockies, but this was a real gift to us, because it gave us an insight on the future, what it could be. And we've looked at this pretty heavily in the Pacific Northwest and some of our other climate change assessments. And first of all, folks who do recreation, they adapt really fast. So they go to places where there are snow. A lot of ski areas were barely open this year, so they went to Mount Bachelor in Bend, Oregon, because they had the highest mountain and the most snow. They had an increase in business. So people move around a lot. They also started doing summer activities. They said, well, heck of it, I'll keep my skis in the closet this year, and I'll start hiking, mountain biking, doing summer activities. That happened very quickly. And although our federal agencies had a very minimal capability of adapting in just a one-year period of time, in my opinion, they totally get it. They totally understand what happened in 2015 and what could be a more frequent occurrence in the future. And so they see how things could shift, and they see that we have to do some things relative to our facilities being available, relatively to when and where seasonal staff, who normally govern recreational activities, are brought on, and essentially, how we go about doing business, being more flexible rather than rigid about dates and locations and so forth. So I think if we can take this experience of 2015, first of all, what it has done is it seems to have validated what we learned in our assessment in the northern Rockies. Second of all, it suggests some ways that we might be able to adapt in the future. So the big test is how fast we can do this and what kinds of resources we might have available to do that in the future. Okay. I have to put in a quick plug for our website here, adaptationpartners.org. All of our assessments in the West are listed here. We just posted something called the Climate Change Adaptation Library for the Western United States. It has something like 150 adaptation strategies, 430 adaptation tactics for vegetation, water, fisheries, wildlife, recreation, and other stuff, and that will continue to grow over time. Onto the panel.
I'll pull some chairs up here for panelists. And in addition to our four speakers, we have Kevin McKelvey, who led our, who spoke earlier today, and he led the wildlife assessment for NRAP. So we'll open after questions.
So Dave, in the recreational work that you were doing, did people bring up during all the meetings, the workshops, safety concerns about the shoulder seasons? We could talk about some of that during the NCAP project. Are people getting out, because it's four months, they'll go out, and then you get higher elevations on the trail, and then now they're in, or it is still snow and they're not there, or a storm comes in, but it was, the storms are still coming, is that brought up?
There was. People are concerned about those early recreations during the shoulder season for two reasons. One is that they're going to get themselves in trouble if they're walking on icy trails or whatever. Second of all, there's not going to be any agency personnel and other people out there to detect or assist with those situations. So absolutely.
Matt, is that your end?
Yes.
At the end of your presentation, you made the comment that we don't need more research about adaptation strategies. And I was struck by the question, how much do we know about how effective those strategies actually are? Which ones are more effective rather than less effective, and which ones should be used?
Well, I guess I should qualify by saying, I don't think that adding a gigantic inventory of adaptations that, you know, given the present constraints and everything with budget and personnel, that couldn't possibly be entertained to begin with. I was coming at it more from a pragmatic perspective. Of course, determining the efficacy of these things needs to be studied, but tools are available right now that they're using that can help. How well they work needs to be studied. But in terms of, you know, deciphering new things with regards to targeted grazing, with regards to conifer, you know, removal, and basically in management strategies that have been in place, I think they'd probably work as adaptation strategies, even if we didn't have anything else. So I guess I should temper the comment with that kind of, you know, perspective. Certainly more work on the efficacy part.
Yeah, do you think climate change in and of itself helps the Forest Service transition in their land management role? You know, they perceive themselves, the services they provide, ecosystem services and others, instead of climate change being seen as a disruptive force, maybe it forces a reconsideration of, you know, mission, outcomes, outputs? Any sense of that, whether it's disruptive or enabling?
I think that major transitions could, yeah, in terms of moving from, say, what I started with, you know, a timber production focus to ecological resources focus. I don't think we really do very much management that doesn't have ancillary goals as its primary focus.
Yeah, I guess since I'm the only national forest systems person here, I would also agree with Kevin that we certainly have talked about ecological services. agree with Kevin that we certainly have talked about ecological services, for example, retention of water, the value of our tributary streams in terms of base stream flows. And I think that in our forest plan revision process, that's been addressed more than it has. It's much less of a commodity output, you know.
But on the other hand, I think that climate change makes road actually getting functional, effective structures in place much more difficult because we can't just look to the past. We can't just say, "Oh, okay, we thinned this then 20 years ago, let's see what it looks like." That doesn't necessarily mean that's what it's going to do over the next 20 years. And so I think it puts a lot of pressure on the managers to try and think, you know, to, well, there's much more uncertainty. One thing I've found with managers over the years is that they prefer not to have a high level of uncertainty. They would like to be able to go out and do something, pretty much know it's going to work.
Like X thinks Y.
And climate change basically stripped that away. Now, maybe, you know, as we see this beast emerge, or let's say this is this morning, we're then going to get a new set of paradigms that we say, "Aha, yeah, we know what's going on, we know this is going to work." But right now, I think there's a great deal of uncertainty as to exactly what to do to address the problem.
One thing I always think of on this topic, too, is that, you know, I know there's just enough gray hair in the room here. Some of you remember when the term ecosystem management was a new term? Ecological restoration was a new term? Conservation of biological diversity was a new term? Younger folks, you have no idea what I'm talking about. You grew up with that stuff. Because these are now accepted paradigms. Those were much, much harder transitions for the agencies than climate change. Because I look at climate change as more of a fine-tuning of existing practices which are filtered through kind of a decision process about how that will be affected in the future. But I think those other things were harder. I think we can do this. I'm not sure we have come to terms with the fact that we have to do this soon. So I think the jury's out.
One word that has come into much more of a debate is really about fire and climate change concerns. And that echoes all the way up through various levels of characterization. In a sense, the coming of climate change and the broader discussion on it within the National Forest System has brought that term into much heavier use, that sort of mindset of, we need to do this anyway, but yeah, climate change gives us some additional impetus towards this resilience goal.
It's kind of a practical inference about resilience, what that term means in a management and ecological context.
To a large extent, it's the evolution of risk analysis into resilience brainstorming. And people don't like uncertainty, and resilience is about not having that. So this is in part shifting our sense of what's going on, and it happened to, what can we do about it in a constructive way? That's not just immediate reaction and spiraling in the wrong ways, but very thoughtful.
Question back.
What advice do you have for resource management of things like huckleberries? You're over harvested, increasing recreation, increasing attention. Any suggestions on how to manage those resources?
Well, we have a, we do have people who deal with things like morrel mushrooms, a lot of those for commercial harvesters. And so I think it's an interesting question because if we take the assessment and we look at, for example, increases in huckleberry with more fire on the landscape, because it's a program that's managed to serve a special uses program, you have to get a permit if you're a commercial harvester. We may have some flexibility, but that's one that honestly, I can't address because that isn't what I do. But I think it's something that probably has been discussed in our workshops, Dave. I would at least think in the Bozeman area in Missoula, I think that came up. That was one of the items. But I don't specifically have any direct answer. So I'm probably no help to you at all.
And it's come up if people are interested in exactly what would be happening to huckleberry. That's a little bit hard to predict in some cases.
Well, I was kind of piqued by the increase in recreation and what that implies for the overuse of other resources in the forest and how does that manage? Is it manageable?
Well, again, it's commercial, but people individually go out and pick. And so, for example, this year in the Northern Rockies was a very bad berry year, and we have a lot of bear mortality because they're getting hit by cars and those sorts of things. And so I don't know how we manage for the non-commercial harvest. We can't quantify that. People are out there. And so we only can deal with the commercial permit system.
And the huckleberry issue has certainly been brought up to us by our friends in the tribes. They have specific, you know, cultural practices associated with it. So we're trying to be respectful of that, and I don't know if we have a good answer for it.
It's a good question.
Sorry.
And the year without snow 2015, the huckleberries, I don't know about your patches, but mine were spent a month ahead of time.
Yeah.
You know?
I am tempted to ask a question, but I don't want to ask and answer. I'm already putting the question. I can see that all of you are very intensely and theoretically practically involved in the job what you are doing and that approach. My question is, how many of you, if any of you, is familiar with the International Panel on Global Climate Change? Every five years, they have a report. I suggest you familiarize with this, particularly the last two panels. You will see the many of the questions, what answer what they have is of the model. You could have anticipated, like this drought what we have. You could have been prepared what it would mean to recreation, to sagebrush and whatnot. You would need to discover something and say, gee whiz, this was a discovery here for us. You would have anticipated. We would be much more effectively presenting to those managers, those which are made position. How many of you, this lady, you have been a forest service 25 years?
No, longer than that. That's just in my current term.
This was the end of the CFS program, which was institution.
I went, I did CFS.
Have you been in my garden, CFS? Idaho, no?
I bet I was. Were you at Washington State or you at...
No. Because if you would have been, you would be looking at the species in quite different ways. You would not be distant between shade and drought and tolerant because it's, you would look at the ecology of the trees. You would be familiar with the Dobbin-Meyer's classification system, which is an Olympic system. It jumps only on one leg. It doesn't consider soil condition, it doesn't consider the moisture gradients. If you would combine this classification system, what they use in Canada, Kryna and Trinka system, they have vegetation, soils, moisture, organic matter, we would be able to work, we could improve on it, and we would be ahead of times.
Yeah. And so I would love to respond to that.
In terms of insect and disease relationship?
Okay.
No, the insects are only reflecting the condition of the tree. Is it in a susceptible or predisposed age or not? Predisposition has many aspects, genetic aspects, of course, too. Primary is moisture relationship and defense chemistry. How, where it photosynthesizes, is the photosynthesis cortezed? If the photosynthesis is cortezed, the defense chemicals are down, the insects, if these pathogens can come in. This applies to plants, this applies to trees. If with this basic relationship, your headlines, what you had in the first graph, would be reduced per to CFS. Water relationship, plant pathogen relationships, and what that I would, and our planning would be quite different. We are fighting in a, our task now is to prevent, make sure that this curve of rising carbon dioxide levels of summer are still in a situation which is would be for relatively not comfortable but livable conditions. We may be too late for this, but maybe not, we are not. One should never say we are too late. So focus on this. What can we do to prolong the agony of the forest, so to speak? So that it can survive to these damn things. Flattens off and then the forest can suckle back the excess carbon. This is our task. Don't lose it. It's nice to investigate a tree from the top and, here is flower, he said needle, this needle, but we have to go down quickly through the root of this system, problem, and work on it. This is my message to you.
So can I ask your name?
My name is Karin Stosich. I was a professor at University of Idaho, a lead professor in the CFS program.
Yeah.
I combined silviculture and forest protection to one. I had your charges. I learned from them and they learned from me.
Yeah.
It was a fantastic program.
Okay. I was in '91, '92.
Besides, I was a head of the institution in Vienna, of a silviculture institution. I have won many hats.
Okay.
And I started with climate change in '89 before Gore came and claimed his love and was pointed out with a single sentence, you know. And I am frustrated because we could have done so much and we are falling behind and we are still in the mode, gee whiz, I found this. This we should have already known, we need to go faster.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Nice, so.
Yeah. There's a notion of, okay, so you've started this process. This is the first time you've done a climate change vulnerability assessment. It's new. What does it look like 10 years from now? You know, if you were to kind of fast-forward, it's like they're going to say, okay, so we've taken this initial step, you know, going from we thought about climate change maybe, when we haven't tried to operationalize adaptation in a formal process. What's it look like a decade from now?
So for the most part, the project brings us up to the brink of implementation, which is what Mary alluded to. We have a nice conceptual plan for how to get this into planning and management. And so the question is, will we have the organizational capacity and will to do that? And so I think the next five to 10 years will be a beautiful test phase. Ideally, it's in planning and then it enables management on the ground that relates back to planning. And we do the monitoring of the implementation to see if it's actually effective. Now, that was easily said in about 20 seconds. That's extremely difficult thing to do, organizations.
And I think I would add to that when I had, you know, answered your question about the need for no more research in the adaptation of these things. It was more from a managerial perspective to say, wow, it's hard to even do what we have, let alone create a bunch of new things. So I guess I'd probably change it in the future. It was geared to the managers to say, wow, we're really overwhelmed. We don't even do what we have right now extensively and at the right times and the right places for, you know, more practical reasons, shall we say.
Another piece of that, if I just finish the, it's not just the management side, but the feedback, the research side. The questions with managers, the conversations with managers, learning from them, learning what the real questions are. You know, we can certainly make up the questions in the initial rounds of guessing what might be important managers. And then you get into the real, well, what have we did that versus that? And there are still some questions that come up about adaptation and what sort of detailed techniques that might require some more basic research, for instance. So there is that piece that goes into the adaptation planning and this process. It raises new questions.
Nick, did you have your hand up? Did you have your hand up?
Nope.
This is something of a tangential question, but I'm curious if you guys considered carbon sequestration in any of the works of your grad?
I know Matt, when was it, you did a whole session on soil organic carbon and carbon sequestration in range lands, which I particularly found interested in, I went to that. But, and that's something that we don't normally talk about, but maybe Dave could comment on the tree part.
So the carbon was addressed through another section of the assessment focused on ecosystem services, of which carbon storage was one. And so we have a fairly nice succinct carbon assessment that was done for the Northern Rockies region. And it relates back to projections of what that might look like in the future in terms of storing carbon. And in the short term, we might be okay with that. In the long term, we expect there'll probably be less capacity to store carbon because of this increase in disturbances. And that's kind of one of the real negative stories, and there's probably not a lot we can do to adapt to that. We may be able to very assertively do more stand density management, fuel treatment and so forth. It doesn't eliminate it, it might at least allow us to control the pulse of carbon emissions. But in general, we'll probably have a net negative in carbon storage across this region.
And that's a very, as you probably know, based on your question, the very tricky thing because it comes with significant trade-offs. Let's say, for example, your goal was increasing carbon sequestration, you know, soil organic carbon as an example. That would come at the cost of other goods and services that I think haven't been thought through yet. So that's part of the difficulty everyone's grappling with.
Is it not clear from the year this year particularly, that water is the most important factor, prevention of erosion and keeping the water flow as so as possible that it doesn't go fast down? So whatever keeps it, whether it's a brush or trees, this would should be fostered? No? Beavers?
Beavers. Beavers are...
Recreation, okay? Sagebrush, and that's sagebrush, cheepgrass. There's some bacteria, I understand, from one of which is so doing. This is worth research and applying because this is something which could create stop to this nightmare because otherwise there's no stop to it. And other things, you know? But other things are common sense, for heaven's sake, you know? But only think about the future of what your children's children are going, in what environment they're going to be, and focus on this. Simple.
I was going to say, carbon-wise, the uncertainty of precipitation is a big piece of uncertainty in that. So we're in semi-arid environment, there's a lot of water dependency, the growth depends on water. And temperatures go up, decomposition rates go up, so the soil carbon out, I mean, besides the fire aspects, but just if you're growing more, it helps. If you're not, yeah, it's outside. So huge uncertainty on that, the water.
So is there a way to understand the economic issues around some of those choices of harvest and planting and recreation and whatever? I mean, are you guys looking at, if we didn't have the way that we want to, the way the plan says, we don't have that opportunity because there's apparently resource constraints, either the dollars or the bodies or the whatever. Is there an economic analysis that can talk to the public, to Congress, to leadership that says, if you don't act and we don't act in a big way, this is what's going to happen? Or, you know, here's some of the impact of not doing what the prescriptions and strategies are all about?
That was done. I thought we had an economic analysis.
Well, the co-author on my talk there, Michael Hands, who's actually economist, has done socioeconomic assessments in different areas of the West. And so that's kind of a start to it. But I think you're talking about a more nuanced approach to identifying trade-offs, risk assessment, all those sorts of things. I think we're a good ways away from that, but it's doable. We need to do that. I think it's great.
As a part of the plan, it needs to come out in the plan.
We will try to do that. I'm not sure we have all the data and analysis we need to at this point, but I think we at least need to create a wrapper around that that will allow us to discuss that, discuss those trade-offs because that's what Mary and folks at the regional office will have to do and have to put in their plans. I know there's some people who would have us manage all the national forests just for carbon, which is patently ridiculous, but they're going to litigate us on it. And then we'll have, we'll be forced to bring forth some of the arguments you're talking about.
My question is a question economist relates back to ecosystem services and creating the connect-the-dots economic story. So, you know, that's been kind of the holy grail for many organizations and for the forest services to explain themselves, explain the economics of the trade-offs in a way that integrate, you know, all of these various services and trade-offs among services and the outcomes, you know, described of and monetized as ecosystem services. And so, you know, we're still talking about low-cost timber sales. We're not talking about net ecosystem benefit from timber harvest and resilience. So we have the words, but we don't really have the economic methodology to... So we have the words, but we don't really have the economic methodology to connect the dots and answer those very questions. Yeah, so that's, that's my sense of it is that, you know, that perhaps the approaches to natural resource management have changed in the last 30 years. But telling the synthetic story and doing that in an economic cost way to, you know, have the right thing be shown and demonstrated in economic cost and benefit as the right thing and connecting the dots, that's really difficult to do.
And you're absolutely correct. And one of the problems, of course, is that a lot of these things, as you mentioned, aren't monetized, right?
Right.
Like, for instance, if we had a cap and trade type structure that monetizes carbon, if you like. And then we have, now we have a currency. And we can talk about carbon sequestration and what it's worth in a formal sense. Or we can talk about resiliency that prevents surges of carbon coming in from wildfire and what that actually is worth in a cap and trade type structure. Without some way to get a common currency across these things, it's very difficult to do those sorts of analyses. We, and then we end up with these things that just look like losers, right? We're going out and we're thinning and it's losing money because it usually does, right? And we don't have any directly to say, well, how much was that worth? In terms of, say, wildfires prevented or loss of carbon or quality of the woods or huckleberry production or any of these other things? Because we don't have a currency to, common currency to talk to them. So one of the things that would help us a great deal would be if we move more towards sort of a market type structure for these non-market commodities. We found ways to monetize them so that then we could actually come up with relatively straightforward optimization algorithms to figure out what to do.
Don't forget to think about the world. Right now, California, the San Joaquin Valley is on the verge of collapse providing the food will be consumed. Prices will go up. The same thing is happening with cattle production in California and Texas. What is happening in Chile, who knows what? We won't have the cheap food for it. Our grain will be price wise going up like this. Who will be able to afford it? Our economic situation will be completely different. We won't have the time to go huckleberry picking unless we need it for very survival. The recreational aspects, the economics of today will be different, totally different. Only 20, 30 years from now.
Yes, and that's a really good point. I talked to Michael Hand about this of some way. Because I said, he was asking me about wildlife relationships. And I said, well, are you considering, you know, and when you're talking about human use in the future, are you considering, you know, something like, you know, the zombie apocalypse, you know? Are you considering perhaps, you know, economic collapse? Or are you considering major movements out of areas because they run out of water? Are you considering any of these major things? And he said, no. He said, we're not going there. We're going to assume that we have societal structures, patterns of population that are relatively similar to current. And given that, we have this analysis. And that's a huge assumption, you know.
I think it's clear. On the so dramatic changes in production of food and water availability worldwide, the socio-economical structure, what we have today, is bound to change. Which way direction is to change is a good question. Definitely it won't be a present change, in my opinion.
There's another question back there.
Oh, yeah, one more.
Yeah, I was just wondering, so kind of with climate and other conditions on the ground maybe rapidly changing and with the Forest Service being a governmental agency, has it been harder for on the ground managers to really respond to these rapid changes? Is there a lot of bureaucracy that's kind of tied up in that? Or you?
Yeah, I, you know, we aren't able to do things that private landowners can do because we're constrained by the NEPA National Environmental Policy Act. So we have the National Forest Management Act, and that's where we do our assessments. But we have to do our NEPA analysis. And so a lot of times we get litigated or we now have, I think it's a protest process or objection process, I can't remember which. But the point is that we are a public land management agency, so we need to have a scoping process and, you know, all those sorts of things, federal register notices, notice of intent, et cetera. Those take a lot of time, you know? I was involved with the sagebrush amendment process and we're still amending the grasslands plan for sagebrushes in North Dakota. And I'm working on that, even though the listing decision came out. That takes a lot of time. And so we aren't as nimble as, say, a private land manager who, you know, private landowner who could do something rather quickly. So we are, and that's true of the land too, you know? So that's kind of our, but it's all part of being transparent because these are public lands. So we aren't as nimble as we'd like. But, but we try to have some enabling, and Kevin probably knows this better than me, but do you remember the fire plan? You know, we had like categorical exclusion.
Cut and schlock, yes.
Yeah, so the categorical exclusion allows a decision maker to sign a record or decision of sort of a finding of no significant impact, Fonzie. We had ways, mechanisms by which we could accelerate projects where we felt there was a need, like in the well and urban interface, for example. So, and I'm not a NEPA person because she should have been here and I'm here instead. But that's what I do, you know, if that helps answer the question a little bit.
There has been a slow increase in the amount of appeals and litigation against the Forest Service for failing to take climate change into adequate consideration in project management plans. So that's not a lot, not like other issues, but it's starting. And I think we'll probably need a few more of those to get our attention so that we can institutionalize this process. I think it'll happen. It'll just take a little more time.
One last thing to add to as an agency, and this could have spawned a lot of this effort, is we were directed by our Washington Office of the Chief to do this climate change scorecard. Isn't that sort of tied to this a little bit?
Well, it's left in the account, no, I think.
Yeah, and so, you know, looking at how well are we ready to put into place some actions that help us to maintain resistance resilience, you know, that we've talked about? And those are big deal words. And although it's an old, you know, if anybody read Hollings article, you know, it's just the ball and cup, it's the old, but it's funny how we dust off old concepts. And you mentioned Obenmeyer. And I just want you to know, I have this Plant Communities book and I read all this stuff, so I know.
This is at least what I, my critique, my critique is.
That I do.
You talk about adaptive, adaptive, but adaptive management to me, I have a vision for a piece of ground which I know the geology source and all this jazz. Obenmeyer, Nodubemeyer. I have, was allowed to see realistically what can be there 40 years from now. I know that you won't be able to see it. Somebody applies a treatment, some industry applies a treatment. After the treatment, 10 years I come back and see what really happened on the ground, not what I thought it would happen. Once I have 10 years there, I have a new situation. I said, I leapfrog again. I have a new vision of plan the next 40, 40 or 30 years.
Yeah.
I would never reach it, but I'm adapting to this, to this stage. Your plan is not reflecting this. You have absolute plan.
And I probably then, just to be clear, maybe misrepresented it. And I think if Bob Keen were here and there were a number of authors on the Forest Page, I would love for him to have had this conversation with you because actually I think we did have that in there.
No, it's not.
You can read the general technical report.
All right, all right.
I would be glad to come to some of your brainstorming session if you have. I won't charge anything.
All right, there is a, there is a draft general technical report. That is up here.
I really don't.
As Dave mentioned, on the website. There is a draft general technical report that will be, is going through review now from this whole process as chapters on each of these resource areas. It's adaptationpartners.org. And thank you again to all of our speakers and to you for your attention this afternoon.
Thank you.